There we go. All set.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody here to the September meeting of the Where is ZBA? The only Board of Adjustment. We've got three applications on our table tonight, but before we go into that, I want to introduce ourselves from the... Am I right?
Sean Gaffney.
Travis Corcoran.
Malcolm Wright.
Mike Bauer.
Kurt Markarian.
And before we go further, I want to make sure that Mike is going to be sitting tonight. We have one, two, three, four, five. And we have, as I said, three applications. The first one is a request for rehearing. And then a variance, and then another variance request. So if we'd like to get going on the first one, we'll just take it in the same order that it's on the agenda. Since it's a request for... Let me explain something. It's a request for rehearing. So usually what that means is we sit here and we deliberate. It's not an open deliberation. Everything we've got supplied in the request, what we need to do is just try to figure out if it has any merit and whether or not we want to grant the request. And if we grant the request for rehearing, then we will have a hearing thirty days from now and everybody will be re-notified. So what do you guys think? Have you had a chance to look at it?
I have.
As I said before, this is labeled as an administrative appeal. I really, I think it's just a request for rehearing. And I went over the application. I appreciate the amount of work that went into it, but I just... I can't find any mistakes that are worth re-examining.
No, I brought, you know, looked back. I actually have both of the cases with me, including the documentation that was handed to us during the meeting in July. Went through the minutes. I don't see from the applicants that were present, or the applications that were presented to us and, you know, the zoning ordinances that were cited and, you know, the article and sections. Everything was conforming to the requirements for the applicant, the applications. The only, the only thing that we did that may have been out of the ordinary is because they were both from the, for the same applicant, we heard
Right.
the information for both of them, but we did vote separately on each of them. So the prongs for each of those applications were heard and voted on. So I don't see that we did anything out of the ordinary or that wasn't in our, within our rights as a ZBA.
Right.
I have two points. First, what caught my eye was the applicant said that he received the mail on June 20th, and I contrasted that. And then the next day I saw was June 18th. And for a moment, I thought that he had not received the notice until after the hearing, but I misread that. The time was a bit snug. It looks like something like nineteen days, but I don't think clearly inadequate. You know, that's almost three weeks. The, so I guess I'm saying that could potentially be an issue, but upon review, I do not see it as an issue. And the second thing is the applicant for the rehearing did have some points raised about being given copies of everything in the file, and he feels that he was not given everything in the file. And I think that that is, you know, sort of worth hearing and worth thinking about, but on the other hand, I don't think that that speaks to the question of, did the hearing that we have consider all facets of everything? I think it did. So, you know, I think there are some interesting things to think about, but in the end, I don't think a rehearing is warranted.
Right. Anybody else? Do I hear a motion to grant the rehearing?
I move to grant the rehearing.
Second?
Second.
Second? It's been moved to grant the rehearing and seconded. All those in favor, starting on this end? To grant the rehearing?
No.
No?
No. Wait a minute. Speaking of mistakes, right, no. Okay, and my vote is no. I want to make sure I had that right. Thought I reversed myself on that, but basically the request is denied, five oh.
Was there a yes? I think it was four one.
Yes. Mine was yes.
To grant the rehearing. Yeah. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you said no. Okay, my apology. See, mistakes. So still, the request for rehearing was not granted, four one. Right?
Correct.
Sorry about that.
I thought you said, yes.
It's okay. No. Moving on to case eighteen twenty twenty-four. Guys had a chance to look at that? This is a request for a variance.
Malcolm?
Yes.
The gentleman that filed has additional information. He thought he was going to be able to speak, but... The gentleman that filed the paperwork is here and has additional information. He thought he was going to be able to speak.
For the request for rehearing. Don't believe that's how it works.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
He filed the application, he thought he was going to speak. He has additional information or anything.
Yeah, no, we've already voted. You have, you have a clear line, and what you need to do now is see Superior Court. And if you want, if you think it's relevant, you can present the information there. Everything you had presented to us for this, for this hearing was all we had to go on. It's all we usually go on, because it's usually... We don't rehear it right away. And by adding more information to the, to the application, we're opening up the hearing. And not everybody was notified for that. So...
Which is improper notification then? Which...
I would, I would, I would love to...
I had a fraudulent delivery on the certified mail the first time. I have a copy of said signature that does not exist on the delivery of that paper.
That paper will, will serve you well at Superior Court lever, level. Right now, we voted on it. It's already gone by. You know what you need to do. All right.
I know exactly what I need to do.
So case eighteen twenty twenty-four.
I'd make a motion to accept the application as complete for case eighteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the case eighteen twenty twenty-four. All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. That sounds five and oh. Here we are. Who's here to speak?
This is Regenerative Roots.
I don't think I've got a case number.
Do you have one for everybody or?
Yes, please, please.
Hey, hey, get that guy out of here. He's being intimidating to him.
Hey, you got swamp all around that place, you dumb fuck! Any of you ever get up and check it? You turned my brother down building the house.
Now is not the time.
Swamp, buddy! You know, you're, you're leading towards something. Smile, come right to me right now! I ain't afraid of you, bud! I ain't afraid of none of you fuckers! You fear me none! Anytime you want to be me, come and call it!
Well, hang on just a sec. You, you right there. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Michael McGuire.
Okay. You want to go through your application?
You have a copy of your application?
Paul, nice for that.
Okay, what would you like me to do? I've never been to one of these.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
For context, usually we'll, if you have anything you want to add upfront, feel free, as long as it take too long. But then we want to step right into the questions of the variance. One, two through five.
Um, yeah, I guess I'll just reiterate, that's the latest copy of the plans.
There's a noise.
Yeah, I want to make sure you get a chance to be heard. I apologize. Sean, Sean! No, it's, it's okay. Yeah. Sorry.
It's okay.
Second.
Yep.
You guys all set? Because, and if you're, if you're okay, we can go ahead, but if you're not, we can call a ten-minute recess.
I might like to see a minute or so of quiet to see that we're into quiet.
That's why I mentioned it.
Yeah, no, and, and...
I don't mean to encroach on your time at all, but it's already been encroached on. And then I wanted, hopefully create a better beginning here.
Exciting.
It's not fair to you.
A little more exciting than I thought it would be.
I think, where's Naomi?
She's in the hallway. So we need to wait for her?
I think we're all set. If you're okay with it, we can go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Michael McGuire. I'm applying for a variance for a, to have a garage built. The only additional information I'd like to submit is the copy of the garage plans, which as of this moment are accurate with the exception of the left and right overhang. There will be none, which basically matches our house pretty much exactly, actually, with the dormers and overhangs and everything.
Okay. You guys have any questions before we get started on the questions? Points?
Nope.
Only, only one that... You want to start by just reading your, your application, starting with the question? Variance will not be...
I'm sorry?
You have your application here, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on the next page.
Basically, what we do typically is we go through the application.
Okay.
You start with the first question or the first article. The variance will not be contrary to public interest. And tell me how, tell us how you address that.
It will not be contrary to public interest because the way our prop... Oh, I got you. I don't know where I wrote it at.
It's okay.
Yeah, I know I had. I think I...
Are you going to have the...
Thank you so much. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Let's see here. Didn't know I'd be giving a speech. Okay, um, so many other properties in the neighborhood have garages, so building a garage here would not look out of place. A garage would allow us to store our vehicles at a site, including several motorcycles, which would actually make the property look cleaner. So I'd argue that it's actually in the public interest for us to have a variance, to build a garage. It'd increase, you know, the sightliness of our property and surrounding properties as well.
Okay. Questions so far? Number two.
Okay. Describe how the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The garage, while being closer to the road than the zoning ordinance permits, would be situated in the property in such a way as to not be very noticeable from the road and would allow the property to look cleaner. No impact to public safety would be made. There is some tree cover from the road, and it's, it's kind of a steep downhill into where the garage would be, so I don't know if anybody would really notice it except for maybe winter time. So, and our house is right there, so, you know, yeah.
Question, Mike?
Yes.
How much closer, what's the distance that you're looking to build?
I believe it's...
About half the distance.
Yeah, I have the site plan on there, which has the garage there, twenty-seven point one feet, I believe is the closest.
Twenty-two point nine feet closer than it?
Yes, within fifty feet.
So, uh... More than half the garage is going to be in the setback?
Correct.
Now...
Wonder if this is timely, Malcolm? One of the things that I looked at was the, the build of the house is nineteen eighty-six. So this application is referencing section eighteen. I wonder if we should be focusing on section three point five, non-conforming lots, which has a setback requirement of only thirty feet.
I think this is a very important topic, and when we get to it, I've got a bunch to say. I don't know if we want to do that now or later.
I just want to, that's, that's what I read in, you know, as we're looking at the site plan and saying, hey, you know, we're twenty feet into the, into the setback. Wonder if we can ascertain if that's accurate?
I believe it is, Ecker. We had a survey, a professional survey done by J. E. Belanger for this variance.
Thank you. Yes, I do, it's in the packet.
One question, I guess, just for context there. Do you have no other choices to put the garage anywhere else?
No. Our property is very rugged. It's more like hiking, actually. So on, our, our property, from what I understand, was built by, when they built the other houses on top of the road, they just pushed the stuff downhill, made a tiny little flat area for our house to go on. Like ten, fifteen feet from the side and back of the house, it just drops off into the woods. Our leach field is actually quite a ways downhill and situated in the middle of the woods. Whenever I pointed out to people, they kind of can't believe that that's where our leach field is. And then there's a pretty significant rock face close to where the garage is going to go. So there's that little pocket right there behind the house. It also drops off on the side of the road. It also, you've got twenty feet to like where the trees are, and then it just drops off again right in the woods. So our house is basically built into the side of a hill.
You have pictures in here that identify?
Yes.
So that's probably the best way to
Yep.
see it, Malcolm, is that he did provide images of his, of his land and it's pretty accurate, so...
I tried to describe the orientation as you would see it from the road as well to give a better picture.
Are you on three now?
Yes.
Your call. You, you go your own pace.
Okay. So you guys don't have any other questions for two? Okay. All right. Please describe how substantial justice is done. I can think of no damage that could be done to the public, while the benefits to my wife and I would be substantial. Our property would look cleaner. Our vehicles would require less maintenance, and snow removal would be much easier on us in the winter time. We currently have a small shed on the property, but we are avid motorcyclists. I do a lot of work on my cars, which is in the driveway in the rain and, you know, the elements and stuff versus being able to do these things in the garage would be nice.
Let me ask you a question. Snow removal would be much easier. Now you're going to put in a twenty-eight by twenty-eight structure. Whereas before, looking at your images,
Yep.
if you plow, you would plow straight across that. So I'm just curious as to how... Okay, so you snow blow.
So currently, we have our two cars, and we have to snow blow the driveway, then pull the cars out, and then we run over the snow, which then makes it really hard to get the snow off, so...
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Any questions? Nope. Okay. Please describe how the values surrounding the properties are not diminished. I believe I've kind of already gone through that, but we took special care to make sure that our garage would not just be a plain throw-up metal structure, but it would actually look exactly like our house. It's got two dormers in the front, just like our house. The roof pitch is the same, a full dormer in the rear. So we wanted to make it look like it just fit right in. And to put what I actually wrote, the garage would not look out of place or be overly noticeable from the road. Again, there's, we try to leave as much trees. Granted, it's a, it's a steep drop-off from the road, so, but we still try to leave as much trees and tree coverage as possible. We're very private people. We've only met one neighbor since twenty sixteen, and honestly, it's great. We prefer it that way, so more privacy for us is great. Anything, yeah, and we do believe that it would actually, you know, improve our home value, which has an effect on other people's home values as well. So if somebody driving down the road, they're not going to see cars parked in the driveway and, you know, a shed and a couple motorcycles. It'd all just be a garage, one nice, neat, clean structure. Any questions? Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So as we've kind of talked about before and with the pictures and the plot plan, the garage can only be built in that location. We looked, we'd have to clear cut the property and bring in a literal mountain of dirt to make a place to put the garage. So, yeah, I think it's kind of self-explanatory there.
You're doing the best you can with what you got.
Yeah, we have a very unique property. We like it for that reason. But it is what it is, so...
Mike, is it also safe to say that with the garage being on that side of the house, that you're, you're entering the house through a kitchen or a...
Correct, yeah. We have a front door, but it doesn't get used. Yeah. We have a walk-in basement on the other side. Yeah, we have a walk-in basement on the other side.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And we did talk to our, our one neighbor that the property, um, that the garage is close to, 'cause our, our house and where we want to build a garage is situated right up next to our other neighbor's property. And at first, before we got the plot plan done, we thought that we would need a variance partly for encroaching on their property. We didn't know we had enough space there. So Carol and I have, we've, she's the only neighbor we know. We talked to her. We got her approval and, um, yeah, she wished us luck for this meeting, so... Okay, and should I go to five, um, part one?
Yes.
Special conditions identified above, please indicate how no fair substantial relationship exists between the general public, purposes of the ordinance, and the specific application of that provision to the property. Our property is on a dead-end road with minimal traffic beyond our house. We have maintained as much, uh, tree and brush coverage as possible from the road to where the garage will go to further reduce any visibility to the public. In this case, violating the minimum front setback, um, will not harm the general public, and as stated previously, may even benefit the public because of the cleaner look of the garage would lend to the property. That, and where the garage is going, um, there's the driveway, kind of parking area, shed. It's all, it's all right there already, so having a garage there versus having all that stuff there, you know, that, that's the only place any of that stuff can go, so without a garage, it'll look worse like it is now. Any questions? Okay.
Do you, uh, deal with... Aye, aye.
Okay. I'm not gonna read that whole paragraph. I'm just gonna go right to the answer, if that's okay. When our property was laid out, it was done in such a way that no garage could reasonably be built anywhere on the property except to the right of the house, which makes it pretty much impossible to not violate the front minimum setback. We, it should also be noted that we are building the garage very close to the house. About as close as you get before you attach it to the house. So I think it's, uh, ten feet, um, from the corner of the garage to the side of the house, so... Yeah.
Questions?
I do have a question about that.
Yes?
The gap between the house and the garage is, as you say, ten feet. And the garage intrudes into the front setback by twenty-seven. Now, it's not straight in a line, so it's not like if you slid it ten feet back, you'd necessarily get further, uh, from the road, or you wouldn't get the full ten feet. But was there thought given to minimizing the intrusion into the setback by sliding it closer to the house?
Yes. We didn't want to attach it... So our, um, our oil fill is in the back, it's on the right-hand side of the house where the garage will be, but in the back of the house. So if we did an attached garage, we would have to have that moved, and honestly, this is already pretty expensive. So doing all of that additional stuff, like having our oil tank moved inside the house or having a line run, whatever they do would have been pretty prohibitive. And we kind of wanted a little open space there if we could, so we're reducing the size of our deck that's currently there to try to bring it closer to the house. And we wanted, we were gonna try to push it back, but there's a natural stream that forms during certain times of the year. And also the hill kind of drops down where that stream is, so pushing it any further back would have meant changing that stream, bringing in lots and lots of fill to try to build a foundation into that area.
If I can add that, back to the garage, the foundation would have been about twelve feet high.
Okay, if you need to speak, you gotta get up there first, okay? Any other questions?
Mike, the only other thing that I'd seen in the application is that you're talking about moving the shed.
Re- removing it.
Removing, okay.
Yeah, it's, we won't, we won't be having a shed, yeah.
I misread it.
Which is awesome.
No more questions? Anything to add to that?
I do not believe so, unless you guys have any questions or concerns that I can try to talk my way out of.
Did you guys want to confer at all, or...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, like you said, there's that twelve-foot thing if we, um, foundation, if we try to push it back any further, which was, yeah.
Right, okay.
Great.
Okay, so no more questions. Do you want to hear from approving abutters? You wanna have a seat?
Oh, yes, yes.
It's your turn now.
Oh, yes.
Any approving abutters that wish to speak? Disapproving abutters, being none, there's a... Okay, public at large? Boards or committees? Well, you have nothing to rebut. Would you like to add anything at all before we close deliberation?
I believe Travis has a concern. Did we add, should I get back up there?
No, I got all the answers. I was asking questions for it. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
In that case, we're gonna close the deliberation now and, and discuss it and weigh the merits and vote on the articles or on the prongs.
Sean, you had brought up the fact that maybe it was in eighteen point two point two, and it was, um, actually three point five for a non-conforming lot. I'm curious...
Yeah.
On that, based on looking at what they have here, the lot was conforming. It's the structure that they want to put in there that would, that is... Encroaching on the setback, not...
So by conforming, we're talking about meeting the two-acre minimum, uh, lot size? And is it the case that it's conforming? I didn't research that aspect.
It is two acres.
Okay, great, so then...
Um, and our house just barely meets the fifty.
Mm-hmm. Just, were we to dive into that and this, I'm, I'm gonna say it because it might be relevant for future deliberations. In the case of Corcoran v. Town of Ware, it has been established that the Ware zoning code with the exemptions in section three point four about setbacks for non-conforming lots applies only to primary residential structures, meaning the house, not to garages.
Do I hear in a, a motion to approve prong one?
I make a motion to accept prong one.
Second? That we're accepting or we're...
Approving to, yeah.
Accept it.
Okay, and then we're gonna discuss it.
Discuss it, yes, to approve, uh, prong one, yeah. It's been moved and seconded. Now we have discussion on prong one. Is there any discussion on prong one?
My discussion is that, uh, I think that the ZBA in general needs to take the setback clauses seriously. And, you know, sort of, the, the default assumption is that the setback clauses were written for a reason and were approved by the voters for the purpose of limiting both literal and visual density. And so, um, I know that sometimes, uh, variances from setbacks just get sort of waved through. Oh, the person wants to. Well, if they want to, let's go forward. And my take is that there is not in, you know, I, I'm gonna say that this case is pretty con- uh, conventional with other requests for, uh, intrusions and setbacks. I think that it does not, um, threaten, uh, health or safety, but any intrusion into setbacks does alter the essential character of a neighborhood and therefore does, uh, impinge on the public interest.
I, I would agree, um, with what you said, Travis. I do agree with what you're saying. However, in this case, um, the only difference with this structure is the fact that it's going to be put there. Every, I mean, when you look at the images that were provided to us, they're not taking out any trees. They're just adding the structure. And to Mike's point, it'll make the, the, the yard look cleaner. In turn, makes the neighborhood look cleaner. So I, I, I understand what you're saying. I agree with it. And in this case, the applicant is before us based on the fact that there is no other suitable place on that property to actually put this structure without a, a very large sum of money to make it. And now, in that point, would you, you would be doing more harm to the environment because of all that fill that would have to be brought in to, um, then place a, a garage there to meet the setback.
Speaking to the setbacks, uh, my experience on it is that the, the, the large part of the reason for setbacks is for, uh, to avoid crowding or overcrowding, overcrowding being an issue with safety. And, and also as far as encroaching on your neighbor. I don't see an overcrowding situation. I don't see a safety issue here at all. I mean, it's a, it's reasonable use.
I agree with you that there's not a safety issue. I've seen no allegation of that.
Yeah.
I think that if the statement is... Twenty-seven feet is as good as fifty feet, that sort of reads the setbacks out of the zoning code. Is there any, you know, reason, you know, i- if it's never overcrowding, we, we've just established twenty-seven feet, you know, isn't overcrowding. I, I think that, uh, you know, it, it can be overcome with other details.
Yeah.
But, but I think that statement on its own sort of, you know, makes a mockery out of the setback clause of the zoning code.
Well, and I, and I think that's what, what the, what the applicant sufficiently does. It provides the, uh, the mitigating, uh, actions to, to support that.
Mm-hmm.
Such as the, the, the design of the structure, the trade-off to the potential environmental impact to move it further backwards. It's a trade-off there. The placement of the garage in contrast to the existing, uh, tree line, if, you know, so the spirit of that ordinance is for, uh, for visual. You know, I think it's remedied there as well.
I would tend to agree with what you're saying, Travis, but, um... If they have no other place to put it, it's a different situation.
I...
I would agree that would be making a mockery of the setbacks if somebody could put a garage here and it's not in the setback, but they want to put it in the setback, that would be over the top. But when you have a situation where there's just no other place to put it, uh, I think getting back to the set is reasonable use.
Mm-hmm. We are, um, I'd like to address that.
Yeah.
Um, the addressing that speaks to other prongs, so I'll...
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say...
Okay, let's, uh, let's, uh, nothing else on that one? All those in favor? Prong one?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
And a yes. Prong one passes four one. Do I hear a motion to accept prong two?
I motion to accept prong two?
I second. Moved and seconded to set prong, accept prong two? Is there any discussion?
I have discussion based on a reading of the, let me get the correct title. "The Zoning Board of Adjustment in New Hampshire: A Handbook for Local Officials." So, um, that brings up two New Hampshire Supreme Court cases. One is, um, Malachi Glenn Associates versus Town of Chichester. And it says, "One way to ascertain whether granting the variance would violate basic zoning objectives is to examine whether it would alter the essential character of the locality." Somewhat overlaps with, uh, prong one. And I think that on that, uh, the, the discussion about prong one kind of covers it. But there's another case, Maureen Bacon v. Town of Enfield. "While a single such project might not greatly affect whatever the goal is, with the cumulative impact of many such project, uh, projects." And, uh, "The cumulative impact theory was upheld later in Perot v. New Hampton." So the question that the board needs to ask is, if every single lot, either on that street or in the residential zone, put a, uh, garage, you know, fifty percent of the way into the front setback, would that violate the zoning objective?
That's an interesting take on that, huh? I would, I would hazard a guess that, that they don't all have the same conditions as far as needing to put a garage on their lot. They might all have a perfectly suitable place.
I agree, but conditions are a different...
Assuming that they're all gonna be building garages in the setback is a little bit of a stretch, I think.
It's, it's not assuming that they would. It's, it's the sort of thought experiment. If they did, would that alter their character?
I guess my point, part of my point is I think we should be focusing on this particular case.
Okay, right, and, and I guess I'm disagreeing. I think that we should read what has come up in two cases before the Supreme Court that this is a relevant case for the prong.
You, you know, you, you are correct. They are relevant. However, you know, you ha, we are here on a case-by-case basis.
Yep.
Not on, on, you know, what was, what could be...
Mm-hmm.
Or what might be. We have to go by facts that are presented to us, which is what is happening here, which is what prong two is, is there for as are the other prongs.
Well, I'll say one last thing and let it drop.
Okay.
Um, I think that we are in fact asked to, uh, ask the theoretical of what could be because Maureen Bacon, the Town of Enfield, specifically said, you know, if a single one, it's, it's not just if a single one did it, if it's, if it is, if multiple ones did this. So that's the standard that I think, uh, needs to be legally, uh, applied by the Supreme Court, so...
Cause you've closed the public hearing.
Yes.
So unfortunately, we can't ask that question of the applicant as to whether or not any other...
Mm-hmm.
Houses on that road that have garages are in the setback of that property.
Mm-hmm.
We have to go with the belief that they are not.
Agreed, but that is a factual question, and what Maureen Bacon v. Town of Enfield said was that the board, when it's considering, uh, this prong, needs to consider the hypothetical. So I agree, it's a hypothetical. Zero houses on the road might have it, all of them might have it. But the question is, if, you know, i- if a bunch of them did, would that alter, uh, things? So I've, I've expressed my point, I...
Understood. I agree.
Any other discussion? Being none? All those in favor of prong two?
Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes.
And a yes. Prong two passes four one. Do I hear a motion to accept prong three?
I motion to accept prong three?
I second it. They moved and seconded. Would have any discussion? I, I think, uh, it's hard to split up these, these points, so to speak, these prongs. They're all related, they're all overlapping. Substantial justice, uh, how do you, how do you define that? I would define it, start by saying it's a reasonable use. Everybody should be able to build a garage. And, and to not be able to build one because of geographical issues, that is, it's, uh... Yeah, that's, that's, uh, far for a variance. I think it's perfectly reasonable to ask for one. And I think justice would be done because of that.
We're on prong four right now, is that right?
Three.
Three, right. So just, so I, I'm in favor of prong three, we'll get to that in a minute. But on the topic of, I, I believe you said everyone should be able to build a garage. I believe that Crossley v. Town of Pelham by the New Hampshire Supreme Court argued otherwise.
Okay.
In my opinion, obvious, um, substantial justice, you know, the benefits of the applicant must not be outweighed by harm to the general public. Adding the garage, though it is within the setback, uh, fifty-foot setback, there is no harm to the general public based on the road configuration that is there as well because there's a guardrail. So there is no chance that someone is going to go off the road and into the garage, um, by accident because they will hit the guardrail first, right?
I agree, and I think the fact that there were no opposing abutters also speaks to the fact that even in a non-safety monetary or aesthetic sense, uh, there's no indication of harm to others.
So, and all, basically that, you know, those facts support that there isn't a benefit to the applicants that would outweigh harm to the general public.
Agreed.
If substantial justice is done.
Yes. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Yes, yes.
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 And a yes for me. Prong three passes five oh. Do I hear a motion to accept prong four?
I motion to accept prong four?
Second.
Second. So I, I'm gonna say that I commend the applicant for being so diligent to create, you know, a, a model of a garage that is going to mirror his house so that there is no discernible difference between the two. Not everybody would do that. So the fact that they took the time to find someone that would be able to match the house is, is commendable.
It's always a hard thing to figure out, you know, are we qualified to decide whether it's gonna raise property value or whatever? We're almost not qualified, but then we are with our, our practical experience. And in this case, my practical experience tells me that a house with a garage is gonna go up in value. And I think that's gonna improve the, the neighborhood. Especially if, if like we say, they're making a point of matching it, the aesthetic, they're paying attention to the aesthetic. So I just can't see any problem with that, with the, with the surrounding properties issue.
I think that the ZBA is called to use their personal knowledge to weigh in on these topics. And to weigh in when there are contrasting opinions. In this case, the applicant had an opinion. There is no expert witness arguing otherwise. There are no neighbors arguing otherwise. So, you know, there's a burden of persuasion, but if nobody is saying the other, you know, I'm sure a burden of persuasion met.
Anything else? All those in favor of prong four?
Yes.
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 And a yes. Prong four passes five, oh. Are you here a motion to accept prong five in its entirety?
So moved, seconded.
Been moved and seconded to accept prong five in its entirety? Any discussion?
I think the application does a thorough job of detailing the, the hardship, you know, the, the unique features of the property, the landscape and the trade-offs that would again, would have to be put in place, which would essentially cause more harm, potentially. So I, I think, I think the application as-is supports, supports the hardship.
Quoting the Zoning Board of Adjustment in New Hampshire, A Handbook for Local Officials from page D six. If the land is reasonably suited for a singular permitted use, no hardship can be found. And there is a case that follows up on this, but basically the examples talk about, you know, if you can put a barn there and it's allowed for barns or churches. Well, you know, there, there is a use, so there can be no hardship. In this case, I believe this is zoned residential and there are five or six different things that can be put there, including houses, barns, garages. And so we know that the house is suitable for a house without a garage, because it has been in that state for 40 years. And this was dug into in Crossley v. Town of Pelham, 1990, which said, "Neighbors appealed the granting of a variance to the Superior Court for building a garage, claiming that the requisite unnecessary hardship did not exist, where the landowners simply wanted a garage. The Supreme Court noted that the hardship cited was a result of the landowner's personal circumstances. That a one-car garage or even no garage would still be a reasonable use consistent with the ordinance, and that therefore, you know, it did not meet the prong." So in this case, I think that the garage proposed is not necessarily a bad idea. Very clearly, this variance is gonna go through, but just to obey Supreme Court precedent. I think that there has been a case on exactly this topic, and I cannot find that hardship exists.
Well, I think it, it depends on how you define hardship.
Exactly.
In this case, it's not necessarily the garage itself that would be a hardship, but it's the location of the garage in this case, which is what the variance is for, not for the garage itself, but the location of the garage. So the hardship would be, is very evident based on images provided of the landscape. You know, we, we know there's gonna be a set cost for where it's gonna be located. The hardship would be that.
When you say where it's gonna be located, there are potential multiple locations and for this choice of location.
Correct. Any other location, though, at this point, would incur a much larger amount that may make it. They may not be able to do it based on the cost.
Yep.
So this is, this location that they've selected is the most optimal and cost-effective, and the least invasive to the property and the surrounding properties.
Okay.
So.
We have, wait, let me just add something. We have an interesting, interesting situation a lot of times. When we're up here, we have to deal with matters of law and matters of judgment. And sometimes they, they don't mesh as well as we'd like them to. In this case, I look, this is how I look at it. It's a reasonable use. Guy wants to build a garage, they ought to be able to build a garage.
I think the New Hampshire Supreme Court disagrees with it.
I, that's, that's a matter of law.
Yep.
And that's why I say it's a matter of judgment. And I would go on if I wanted, I could go on forever. I won't promise, but is a hardship, I don't know. I'd love to have a garage to keep my truck out of the weather, protect my property. Otherwise, my property is, is going down in value because it's out in the weather. The garage is a very integral part of having a house and a home. And I think it, it's a right as much as it is a reasonable use.
I think the Supreme Court disagrees with that.
If you could've put it anywhere on the lot, I would have something to say about encroaching on the setback. But if you can't put it anywhere on the lot, I see that as a hardship.
I, I think that settled case law that that is incorrect. I, I think that there is no right to a garage.
And I, and I think continuing the conversation is reaching back into sections one through four, which we've already voted yes.
Good, what I meant, it's all overlapping. It's good that you wanted.
But perhaps, yeah, no further comment.
And I guess one last comment. I, I did understand and, and agree with many of the points you made about alternate locations imposing substantial burdens, both in dollars and in labor and other things. And I think that that is an argument that comes up in a lot of zoning cases, both from ZBA members and from the public. However, I think that that is something that could plausibly be in the zoning code, and the planning board might want to put in the zoning code through amendment to be voted on by the citizens. But at this point in time, it is not true that the zoning code basically says, these are the requirements unless it would cost money, in which case you don't have to obey them. And I think that we often act as if that's what the zoning code says.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Nope.
All those in favor of prong five in its entirety?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
And a yes. Prong five passes four, one. You have your variance. I believe we don't have any, any restrictions.
Thank you.
We're good?
Two down, moving quickly.
Yeah.
Not like that first one. We're gonna be here till one unless that one guy had backed away. That was very nice of him. Oh yeah, that was exciting.
We're, we're on record here. Brett, case 19-2024. Regenerative Roots Association is an application for a variance. Who would like to speak to that?
All right. Good evening, Chairman Wright.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Another one of my mistakes. We need to look over this application, see that it's complete, and vote to accept it first.
Sure, thank you.
I apologize. Everybody have a look at it.
Mm-hmm. Yes. I make a motion to accept the application as complete for case 19-2024.
Seconded?
Been moved and seconded to, seconded to accept the case 19-2024. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
And a yes, five, oh. Now it's your time.
All right.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. I appreciate the process. Good evening, Chairman Wright, members of the board. My name is Amy Manzelli from BCM Law, and we are here again to put forward this really exciting economic development project with the solar array. We are here in good faith, taking the guidance from the town to seek a variance. Sort of in a, let's agree to disagree a little bit, that this is a commercial use, and we'll call it a commercial use and apply for a variance. So that's what we're here to do. Because, go ahead.
If you, I apologize for interrupting, but if you're about to go into the variance points, I'm wondering if you could entertain a little discussion here.
Sure.
Because, I hate to say this, but I, I'm wondering why you're here for a variance.
Oh dear.
You know what, you know what I mean.
No, I don't. So let's have that discussion.
I think I should put this on the table for you to consider.
Okay.
Typically, the ZBA is the last point in the line. You go to, you wanna build a garage or whatever, you go to the building inspector, they say you need a variance. And they will give you a formal decision. Or you need, you wanna build a project of some kind, you need to go to the planning board, and they will give you a formal decision. I have, having a hard time with the application because I don't see any formal decisions that we are writing a variance for.
Okay.
But based in what was written in here, they were before the planning board. And the planning board is the one that suggested that they come to the zoning board for a variance. So that, you know, in her, in your defense.
Thank you.
You know, so I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Malcolm, I absolutely agree with you, cause we, we had this discussion the last time that this was before us, that we didn't understand why they were here for it.
So to layer my own phrasing of our mutual confusion onto this, as I recall, there was an unclear detail as to whether a certain administrative action had fully taken place or not, and am I remembering that correctly?
That may be your memory of it. That is not.
You can tell me I'm totally wrong.
No, no, no. That is not our understanding of the facts.
Right.
So.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd be happy to address this.
I don't wanna.
There's, there's a couple ways we can tackle this. First of all, procedurally, you've already voted that the application is complete. Which means that we have provided everything that you need to act on this request. So that act is done, so now it's time to decide whether we meet the five variance criteria. That's one way we could skin this cat, so to speak, as my dearly departed dad would have said.
Very good point.
Okay.
The reason I brought it up when I did is because sometimes when we go straight into a variance discussion, it can be confusing, and it can get messy and may not fall as well as we'd like it to.
Okay.
So it's been done in the past, where the chairman will, will put something like this on the table to give you thought, a chance to think about it.
Yep.
And I'm not putting words in your mouth or plans in your head.
Yep.
But if you wanna go forward, we can go forward. But I just wanted to be sure that you think you're in the right place.
We think we're in the right place.
Right.
Under the current circumstances. And, and what I mean by that is we really think that this is not a commercial use. But the planning board thinks it is, and they told us as much. And we came here to you to appeal the town administrative decision from February 13th that followed us appearing before the planning board. That, and that town administrative decision also confirmed it's a commercial use. So under those circumstances, we believe we are in the right place. And to very directly answer your question, we included in our application for the variance, the February 13th, 2024 town administrative decision, which was made by your town council with apparent authority that we will reasonably relied on, that it's a commercial use and needs a variance. So.
Just interrupt you, I apologize.
No, that's fine. That's, I wanna have this dialogue.
I went through this at length. And, and based on what was written on the August 10th meeting, you know, that the board advised, meaning the planning board advised that the solar array would be a commercial use, which is not permitted in the R A district. I think they overstepped from the standpoint of, they overlooked the fact that this is not the only part of this project.
And to be clear, you're basically saying that's the framing that's before us, right?
Correct.
Great. I, I agree. That's my understanding.
I appreciate everything here, but you can go forward now. We'll, we'll, we'll have questions and we'll have the discussions. I just wanted to kind of preface that.
Okay.
Well, my, my point was gonna be that when you look at our zoning ordinance and you look at the definition of "commercial" shall mean the buying and selling of goods, commodities, or services for the exchange of a monetary value.
Is this in section four definition?
It is. It is on page 12 at the bottom.
Perfect. Thank you.
Versus the definition of agriculture, including farm and farming, shall have the meaning set forth in New Hampshire RSA 21-34-A. If, if we're gonna go with the definition of "commercial" being as what it says here, that would mean that every farm that has a farm stand would also be considered commercial.
I couldn't agree with you more.
And, and I, and we actually agree with that. I mean, farms are commercial. That, farms are a business. They're commerce. But farms are a unique, yeah. I know if anyone's ever seen The Schedule of Us. It's a, it's a, it's a, well. Whether more goes out than comes in is different, but there's a flow of money, right? We can agree on that. And so, but it's a unique land use among New Hampshire law that it is treated differently than almost all other commercial uses, right? And we, and I, we went over that in our variance. We listed all the types of commercial uses that are prohibited in this district, and contrasted that with this proposed use to show you how unlike those commercial uses we are.
Having read the variance application and, and knowing this point, I think that we've had a bunch of introductory stuff, and we're now touching the meat of prong A and three, so maybe we should just jump into the.
So what I'm here to do is just do a brief introduction of two folks who are gonna tell you a little bit more, and then I'm gonna come back and go back through the prongs. I'm gonna do it in a summary fashion, cause as you know, we've briefed it exhaustively. So without further ado, Andrew, why don't you come up? This is Andrew Moran from Regenerative Roots. And I've asked Andrew, and then I'll introduce Megan, to present to you for one minute. We'll see how he does.
I'll be really brief. Andrew Moran from Regenerative Roots, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a background for the project. Purchased the land in 2022. After we purchased the land, we came a opportunity for a solar array. Community solar array came to us from Revision Energy, from the New Hampshire Department of Energy. So we applied for such. Governor Sununu approved the grant. And one of the conditions for the grant would be 15% of the power would be used by us. And approximately 64% of the power has to go to 15 low-to-moderate-income homes. And we've reached out to the Ware Welfare Department to see if they would wanna get that 64% of the power, which would be about $20,000 a year towards the community of free power. So a lot of the quote-unquote "commercial use" would be ultimately for the community. Also, did wanna point out that this is going to be sited on less than a half an acre. And it, it would be one of the first agro-voltaic arrays in New Hampshire. And what we mean by that is the solar panels would be placed in such a fashion that we would be able to grow crops underneath. Our intention would actually be to grow fruit trees from April through October in pots. And then subsequently use them for the planting of community orchards, which we do around New England. We actually just planted one last Thursday in Brad for New Hampshire. So we really would be combining the two uses in the agro-voltaic array. So it would be still primarily agricultural, and it would be one of the few ways that we can make farming financially viable in southern New Hampshire again. So that was my little spiel. So that was my little spiel.
Thank you. Maybe double the allotted time, but still pretty concise. And Megan Yuland from Revision Energy, just to give you a little bit more of the specs of what the array itself will be like.
Thank you. For those of you that are unfamiliar with Revision Energy, just a quick background on us. We're a local employee-owned solar company, offices in Maine, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and a certified B Corporation, which means our mission values are tied to producing benefits for people in our communities and for our planet, not just profits. Over our twenty years in business, fourteen of those in New Hampshire, we've had the pleasure of working with nonprofits, municipalities, businesses, residents across the state on projects that reduce electricity bills and increase their energy independence through renewable energy. And we've had a lot of success with securing Department of Energy low and moderate income funding for our customers that work with those communities and to, to build projects that increase solar access to low and moderate income communities and qualified individuals. The project that we're proposing is a ground-mounted system. It consists of ground screw foundations that are inserted into the soil with minimal disturbance. There's no concrete footings. There's a racking system which attaches to the ground screws, and the solar panels are mounted to that racking. The project proposes to install two hundred and fifty-two solar panels. That might sound like a lot, but in actuality, the panels cover only sixty-three hundred square feet of space on the lot, which is very, very small compared to the seven-acre parcel. The project will be composed of several rows, as Andrew mentioned, being thoughtfully designed to allow planting in between and around the rows. And the tallest height of the array is, it will be no more than fourteen feet at the tallest point. And it does benefit from the existing tree line buffering it on both sides of the property, east and west. And would you like me to speak to the grants? Funding net metering?
Super great.
Okay. The grant funding ensures that the eligible participants in the community receive the benefits of solar net metering directly on their electric bills at no cost to the participants. The way this works is that the households that are enrolled in the program will receive an equal percentage of those net metering credits to their bill. The array exports electricity to the grid, and it is recorded, and Eversource takes that, those kilowatt-hours, converts it to a monetary credit, and that credit reduces all of the costs on the customer's electric bill. It can offset, you know, the customer charge, it will offset transmission, distribution, supply. And so it can really have a meaningful impact on reducing somebody's power expenditures. And that is my view this evening.
Thank you.
And as we go through the presentation, if you have any questions, I know they have to come up to the mic, but Megan and Andrew are definitely available to answer questions. So I'll go through the variance prongs. As you all know, the New Hampshire Supreme Court has instructed taking one and two together because of that overlap that you've mentioned tonight. One and two are really closely related. So granting this variance will not be contrary to the public interest, and it will observe the spirit of the ordinance. And we've touched on this a little bit because this is an agriculturally supportive use. In fact, we do think it is agriculture. We've touched on the, the New Hampshire Supreme Court law there that, from Chester Rod and Gun Club. One of the ways to look at whether this prong is satisfied is to see if the use would threaten public health, threaten safety, or threaten welfare. And we think exactly the opposite, that this use would enhance all of those factors. We went through, you know, no pollution, supporting some of the values in the master plan, supporting the right to farm in the zoning ordinance, supporting some of the goals in the RA district. And while the property is buildable, using the land for agricultural purposes, supported by a solar array rather than residential buildings, is more consistent with the zoning ordinance's limited density for this area. So it really helps maintain the character that this area is designed for. And then again, to the extent that this use is even commercial, it is not the type of commercial use prohibited in this area, like hotels, grocery stores, pharmacies, and the rest of the ones we listed there. So that's prongs one and two.
So in the, in talking about the agriculture, excuse me, yeah, agriculture, that what you're going to do beyond the solar array, there's going to be plants there, which will then be distributed for orchards and stuff like that. Will they also be selling some of these trees or other products that are produced there? Other crops?
We weren't planning to do any sales onsite currently. There may be pickups because we do a residential tree giveaway. So I could foresee that there would be occasional pickups, particularly in September. But overall, we feel it would be less of a use than many of the other uses that are listed.
Okay. Thank you.
And I also wanted to make this procedural note. Should the board grant this variance, as we hope the board will, the next stop, of course, would be site plan approval from the planning board, where a lot of these details would be ironed out, you know, some of the operational site details. Other questions on one and two? A lot of left-handers on this board, like myself. Okay, number three. Granting this variance will do substantial justice. I know this board knows the balancing test here. But Regeneration Roots will suffer a great loss if not able to use this property for this use. This is the way that modern farming makes farming either viable or less not viable, you know, depending on how successful the farming operation is doing. And that is what Regeneration Roots is in the business of doing. It's a farming organization. That's what this land is for. That is the only objective for this land. And there's no harm to the public in having saplings and other vegetative growth, having farming happen at this property, supported by a community solar array that provides free electricity to Ware citizens. That's a public benefit, not a public harm. So substantial justice will be done by granting this variance.
I have a question. Might not be related to this prong exactly, but I'm wondering, would there be any plans to enlarge this array?
No, there are no plans to enlarge the array, and I, I believe we have not discussed that. But if a condition of approval were put on to limit the size of the array, would that be acceptable?
Uh, yes. That would be acceptable.
Yeah.
No plans to expand the array. Also assigns the cleared area. There's a lot of wetlands on the property, so in the rear of the property where the woods are, there's a lot of that. So the array would be where there's already clear space. I have to come up with-
If you've got more to say, you know what I mean?
I can, I can repeat that for record-keeping purposes. So not only are there no plans to have an array expanded beyond what is applied for, but in addition, the agricultural operations would not be expanded beyond generally what is cleared on the lot. Because the standing trees there are, I'm, I'm not saying this in sort of a certified wetland delineation sense, but more in a general sense, are sort of forested wetlands. You know, there's brooks on either side, wetlands in the back, so it's not suitable to clear those trees and develop them for even farmland.
So basically, you've already determined the best location for the array to go both for lowest impact to the property and biggest effect for sun to energize those arrays?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Yes, just a quick question on dimension. So did I hear correctly that the, that the proposed arrays would be sixty-three thousand square feet?
Sixty-three hundred square feet. There's six to seven rows. The panels themselves will cover only sixty-three hundred square feet. If you count the space in between, it's more, less than half an acre, as Andrew had mentioned.
So half an acre, a hundred is a hundred by a hundred approximately. And did, also just a clarification. It says that the, that fifteen percent of this, of the energy would be used for the operation. Right? So fifteen, fifteen percent of this, a hundred and twenty kilo- I'm not going to pretend to convert electricity. But I'm just curious, would, that comes out to eighteen kilowatts? But what's, what's the alternative production of that level of energy?
Meaning?
Well, meaning is, is the, the part of this grant is that eighty-five percent of it, or sixty, excuse me, what's the percentage here? Sixty-four, sixty-four percent is trimmed off, put over here, right? Fifteen percent, as it states in the application, is being used for the operation.
Yep.
And so the total grant is a hundred and twenty kilowatts. Eighty, sixty-four percent's going elsewhere.
Yep.
Fifteen percent's used for the operation. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, like, what the alternative energy would be? Like, what, what are we really replacing in that case?
There's a little bit of a difference between the system size and the annual production, which might help clarify. A hundred and twenty KW DC producers.
Oh, sure. I think I understand your question. Let me take a stab at it. So this is an undeveloped lot, and so if there was no solar array put in, I think they would call up the utility service, get a pole pun in, put in, and run a distribution line from the electric utility line. And they would sign up for electric utility service. Is that what you're asking? So if this solar array didn't go forward, they would just sign up for a new electric pole to go in and pay their electric bill, just like, you know, if you were developing a new house or any other sort of regular new build condition. The problem with that, though, is the cost of that energy would tip the finances of this organization to make the use of this land not feasible. Is that what you were getting at? Like, how would they do this if they didn't do a solar array?
I was assuming use the sun, like, farming.
Yeah.
But, no, I just was curious, and I'm just thinking in my mind, I have essentially a one hundred by one hundred grid.
Okay.
Right? As I was saying, fifteen percent of that's what's going to run this whole operation.
Yeah.
What, what kind of, I just was curious with that.
What is it, running?
Yeah, really.
Oh, okay.
What's that?
Oh, okay.
Are we, are we replacing, are we replacing an eight thousand kilowatt generator that we use at the house?
A lot of the power would just be for the pump. And then also, one of the interesting things about this grant is we would also be able to use some of the power for our food pantry in Dashville, New Hampshire. So it would be used just to power, you know, the minimal electric need. That would be there mostly for the pump and to pump irrigation. And then we would also be able to use some of that fifteen percent for a more traditional food pantry, the electric needs there that we also have.
And, and so just for, I think that you bring up a good point there. Just for clarification, is, is you terminology "community"? Just in the spirit of that, I think that the, that the application here is broader than Ware, by substantially.
Yep.
Can, can you speak to what would, outside the electrical allocation, what, what? And I don't want to get too far off track here, but I'm just curious what the, what the, the applied, like, the, the purpose of this? What part impacts Ware directly?
Yeah, I mean, the overall purpose was to try to make agriculture more viable overall in New Hampshire by combining the solar array and traditional, more traditional agricultural production. For Ware itself, I think the major benefit after it was constructed would be the approximately $20,000 for the sixty-four percent that would go to the fifteen low to moderate income homes. And we're hoping that Ware Welfare Department would help us choose those homes. So it would actually be local energy production distributed locally, which is very rare now.
Thank you.
Andrew, just, you can nod, and I'll confirm for the record, that $20,000 figure, that's an annual figure?
Uh, yeah, annual figure based on their current electric cost. But annually, it would be $20,000. That would hopefully-
So that's an annual value to the Ware community for that electric production?
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
Number four.
All right. So number four is similar to the last variance application you heard. When you develop, improve, enhance property, it generally increases the value of real property. So we have an undeveloped lot here. We're going to convert it into an operational agricultural use with this $325,000 investment of a community solar array, with that trickle-down economic flow-through to the households in Ware, with the larger geographic economic impact going south to Regeneration Roots Nashua Food Pantry. All that economic development enhances real estate property values. So there won't be any diminution in property values here.
Questions?
Yeah. Okay. And then, lastly, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. We've touched on a few times, people don't get into agriculture to make millions of dollars. It's not a very profitable endeavor most times. And so this is, not doing this use makes this property not viable. When Regeneration Roots was looking for an agricultural property, one of the special conditions of this property, and we included the soil map here, is that almost all of the non-forested wetland buffers on the outside, almost all of that interior part is prime ag soil. So that's an important property characteristic, as well as it being affordable and available. So those were all unique special conditions of this property when Regeneration Roots was looking to purchase. And we've given you both the tax map and the soil map that show you where the property is and those physical attributes. And we've mentioned the budget there, looking for farmland at $170,000 or less, which is a substantial investment. And there's no relationship, no fair and substantial relationship between the general specific purposes, as we've talked about, of prohibiting this type of agro-voltaic use in this district, where all of the Ware laws, the zoning ordinance, the master plan, et cetera, lift up agricultural use in this zone. And the use is reasonable. It's a very small proportion of the lot that will house the solar array. The trees will not be removed, and otherwise, it will be used for cultivation. Questions?
So the property cannot be reasonably, reasonably used otherwise?
Not by Regeneration Roots.
I have a question.
Yeah, what's that caveat? Can you explain that caveat, please?
Sure. Regeneration Roots is not a homeowner or a subdivision real estate developer or a Rite Aid owner. They're an agricultural organization. So without being able to put a solar array in to make their agricultural operation viable, they can't use this property as an agricultural property. And nor could most farmers. That's, you know, that is the modern state of agriculture is to put in, you know, a pocket solar to either subsidize your own costs or to enhance your income.
So the clarification there, so I think the distinction is not the, not the plausibility of, of growing a crop from a growing-up dairy farmer without solar arrays.
Yep.
It is, it is actually an economic feature to help subsidize this operation.
Yes. And, and as a former or son of dairy farming, or both, you know economic viability is key. Yes, the answer is economic viability.
Thank you.
Yep. So at this point, you know, as you know, the applicant has been before various boards at the town for many months. I haven't counted it up, but it might be more than a year. We have a wonderful opportunity to bring to Ware, and we respectfully request that you grant this variance tonight. We welcome any more questions that come up before you close the public hearing. And of course, if anything comes up, we'd like the opportunity to rebut.
One quick question. I'm not sure if you can answer it. Is the, the fruit trees that are going to be grown on the property, roughly how many are we talking about on an annual basis?
Goal would be to do five hundred to a thousand apple, peaches, and pears. We, we found that five hundred to a thousand is a good number just because it's easy- We found that five hundred to a thousand is a good number, just because it's easier to distribute and we can get most of them planted healthy. So that would be.
And actually, and this is ninety percent my own curiosity, but how many years of growth do you go from the grafting to before you sell them on? And so how long would they be?
We actually try to do them the first year, just to make it easier. So we graft in April, and then we do our plantings in September, October. We also buy some second-year trees, which wouldn't necessarily be under these arrays. Don't want to delve in too much. A little bit different, but yeah, it's usually all done within six months.
And these are all potted and then just sort of in arrays on the ground?
Potted. They're actually put in boxes where you can have nine trees per box, so they don't take up much room. This year, we did it mostly at our food pantry in Dashville, just because we were wondering how this was going to fall before we had electricity there. So we didn't raise the trees there this year.
Thank you. While you're there.
Yeah.
Kirk kicked us off.
Andrew.
Yes, Andrew. I forgot to ask, for some of the dimensions. What's the height of the arrays?
No more than fourteen feet.
Yeah, no more than fourteen.
No more than fourteen, yeah.
Okay, I missed that. And what's the, is probably on here, on a, when I, just refresh my, if I failed to see it, just the proximity of the, the location of the array to the next closest property line?
Good question. I am not sure. It was pretty far. Because there's two, there's two tree buffers, and then there's cleared land in the middle, and it would be in the middle of that cleared land. So I don't know the exact, the distance to. Over two hundred feet to the closest property line.
Yep, thank you.
I wanted to ask that question, too. It would definitely comply with setback, and that's definitely something that we would be depicting on the formal site plan that we give to planning board.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions?
Who services the panels should something go wrong?
I believe it's revision. Yeah, there's warranties that are associated with them. And yeah, do you want to just talk about O and M?
We have a full service, service team. We are on call for any issues. We service manufacturers' warranties of all the equipment. It is up to the property owner whether they enter into a specific operations and maintenance agreement with us, but their, the primary tools for servicing the system are online monitoring portal, which shows how it's producing. The system doesn't have any moving parts, so it doesn't need regular maintenance. That monitoring portal really gives you an indication if there are any, any faults or any production issues, which is what prompts us to go out. And we do, do proactive monitoring on that if the customer elects, so.
In permitting these sites at planning boards in other towns, police and fire have had interest in making sure that there's access, and so we always coordinate with them in connection with site plan. Sometimes they want to make sure they can get, you know, a utility truck in between the rows. Sometimes they want a gravel perimeter road. And so, you know, we essentially are going to make sure that they're satisfied, that there's emergency response satisfaction. That's always a part of the site plan process. So that's always addressed.
So if residents sign on to it, and, you know, they want to use solar, are they able to back out at any point in time? Are they locked into like some type of contract? Are they on the hook for any like fees or maintenance or anything like that?
Yeah, you guys can speak to that, but I think yes.
The participants in the group net metering program by which they receive the credits, they do not incur any fees for the ongoing maintenance of the array. If they do elect to discontinue, they can do so at any time, and they would be replaced by another participant that is interested.
No, that's all I got. Thank you.
All good questions? Keep them coming if you got them.
You can add?
No, thank you. We've, we've put it all out in the presentation and in the application. I mean, we, we.
So now.
You know, we think this is a fantastic project worth moving forward, so I won't say it many more times. All right. Let's get the citizen input.
Now it's time for approving of butters. Disapproving of butters. May you know approving butters, disapproving of butters?
Done your homework. Sure.
You are in a butter?
I am.
Okay.
I am. I just have one question for, is it Alan?
Andrew.
Andrew, sorry.
Did you drop this off the other day?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I was getting the right paperwork.
For the record, could you state your name and the?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Victor Tebow. I'm in a butter to the property. Do I need to state which butter?
Uh, no, no.
No?
I'd be curious, just, we've got a map here, so.
Yeah, I'm seven sixty-five, so I'm to the left of him.
Great, thank you.
If you're looking at the property.
Standing on conquered stage?
Yep.
Great.
So I went through and took the time to write up all of Ginn's your prongs. If I could be so nice to pass them out to you so you can review them if you like. And if you want, I'll go through them with you. I thought it would be for each of you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
I don't, sorry. I can give you mine after I'm done.
Is it possible to pause for a minute?
I think that's reasonable.
What's that?
To pause for a minute and run off copies so that the applicant can read along?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
You want me to give you that? You want to take mine and then?
We're waiting.
Yep. I do have some questions for you guys, too, so.
Yeah, and I wanted to at least drop it off for you.
Some, yeah, some of them I got answered when you guys were up here talking. That's in my.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You'd like to read this through?
Would you like?
Go for it. Be free to paraphrase it.
All right. I'll try, but it's, there's a lot in there to share, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So first, I'd like to start with the Planning and Zoning, Chapter six seventy-four thirty-two C, okay? Section two states that nothing in this subdivision of six seventy-four thirty-two B shall exempt new reestablished or expanded agricultural operations or activities from generally applicable building and site requirements. Okay? That's copied in there, by the way. That kind of being said, we get into, I guess you guys are calling it prong. I worded it as criteria, okay? Number one, variance will not be contrary to public interest. It's, I think I, let me read through it here, because I'm kind of lost, sorry. We have a rural agricultural zone with a rural conservation overlay in that area, okay? Now, if you go through to the rural conservation overlay out of our ordinances, for purpose and intent, the rural conservation overlay district is superimposed over the rural agricultural district in order to encourage wise use of land, which contains important natural resources. Now, they already said it had important natural resources. It had fertile soil, right? Okay. The RC district is intended to protect and enhance the rural character, character and natural resources of the town, yet allow for orderly residential growth and to provide for retention of open spaces. Okay? So as you can see, when the town put this in place, they, they, they wanted to have retention of open spaces or have orderly residential growth. I believe filling even just a half an acre of solar panels, that this isn't what was intended by the townspeople when they put this in there. Now granted, maybe the solar panels weren't around then, okay? And they are now, but here we are, right? I don't think this variance is so much to, to stop them from putting a farm there as much as it is the commercial use of solar arrays. Okay? So I think the variance needs to more focus on what the solar arrays are. So if we go into criteria number two, again, that relates back to number one. They kind of overlap. We've all heard that discussion, right? I think it still, criteria number two, it's going to show that the overlay or the open spaces would diminish in that area, okay? Criteria number three, substantial justice. And Doug, the, as, as it states in, I think it's your zoning board criterias, right? It says the injustice must be capable of relief by the granting of variances that meets other qualifications. Well, so far, in my opinion, we haven't met criteria one, we haven't met criteria two. Okay? So if we move on to number four, values of surrounding property are not diminished, right? Okay. There was a study put out by Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory, which is copied here, that saw a decrease in property values near solar arrays, especially within a quarter of a mile. Now, how does that filter me in? I'm the butter, right? I think my neighbor's another butter, and there's a bunch of butters around this property. However, the greatest impact was mostly in rural settings, which is what we live in. We don't live in a city. We don't want a city. That's why we have the ordinances we have. Okay? Let's see. It's also stated in six seventy-four thirty-two C that it must not have an effect on adjacent property values. Now, we can't base it just totally on that. I get it. But we have two different facts here that we can need to take into account, okay? We can say as to whether it also meets adverse effects on public health and safety. That's still up in the air, okay? We can say it doesn't, we can presume it, though, okay? But we presumed it with high tension lines back in the fifties. Now, after all these years, research has shown that that now affects people in their health, okay? Because of the magnetic fields that it creates. We don't know that yet about solar arrays, but we can't presume just because we don't know. Because that's like me saying, I made a new acid that can eat metal, and it's okay for me to dump it into the ground because, well, we haven't proved that it's toxic. So anyways, excuse me. Let's see here, where do I leave off? So six seventy-four thirty-two B also says, nothing in this subdivision or in six seventy-four thirty-two B shall exempt new reestablished or expanding agricultural operations or activities from general applicable building and site requirements. We have ordinances that state that they can put a farm there. There's no issue. We have special exceptions for the rural agricultural area that says we can put in solar panels for residential use only. There's a reason why those are there, okay? So to put in a solar array of this size is, in my opinion, against the ordinances that the townspeople voted on to have. I have no issue if you want to put in a solar system, we'll say, that's capable of running the farm. But here's the thing, based on this picture right here, okay? And maybe she can clarify it because she's here tonight. And maybe I'm looking at it wrong, and she can help clarify it for me. So a hundred and twenty point nine six kilowatts per day output, correct?
Hold on. I just, I just want to clarify the procedure, Chairman Ray. Should all the questions go through the chair?
Okay.
Yeah, let's not go back and forth.
Can I ask you this question, and they can rebut again? I don't know. I want to make sure.
Question out there. She can put, you can put the question out there, and she'll have a chance.
I apologize. Thank you. I'm new to this, so.
I get it. We want to provide the information.
I appreciate it. So looking at this, I see an output of a hundred and twenty point nine six kilowatts a day. Now, we heard earlier, I was hoping to get clarification when you were asking your question. They said fifteen percent usage for the farm, sixty-four percent going to, go to moderate income, okay? Now, where's the other eleven percent? That would be question number one.
It's actually twenty-one.
Oh, sorry, twenty-one. Thank you. Quick math.
That's okay. No, it's in, it's in.
I gotta be up early, too, so.
Oh, that's fine.
Anyways, but based on that, okay? The average household, if you look it up, in the state of New Hampshire utilizes twenty-nine point four kilowatts per day. Average household, okay? We're talking about a farm utilizing fifteen percent of a hundred and twenty kilowatts, which in turn turns into eighteen kilowatts a day usage, right? That's sixty-two percent of what a normal household would use on a daily basis to run irrigation pumps. That don't make sense. Those are some big pumps. Okay? So I just want to point that out. Now theoretically, if I go down through this again.
If I may interrupt for a second, I just want to understand the intent of that point. So I followed your math?
The intent of the point is the fact that I don't think that even running irrigation pumps is going to utilize eighteen kilowatts a day, okay?
Great. So, but, but is the concern that, and then actually they're probably doing something else with that electricity, or is there a particular concern, or?
I can't make an assumption, right? But I can state facts.
Right, okay.
Okay? That may lead you guys to ask more questions. Okay? That's all I'm doing. I'm throwing it out there because I want it to be on the table.
Cool, thank you.
Not a problem. Now, looking through this paper somewhere, I see annual generation of a hundred and forty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-three. I'm assuming that's kilowatts per year. Or this says kilowatts per hour next to annual generation.
Kilowatt hours, I think, yeah.
Okay. Because if I divide that out by three sixty-five, that comes out to four hundred and six a day. Just questions, okay? Facts that I'm seeing, so. All right. So we'll move on. We kind of covered the commercial use yet, so I'll, I won't get into that. I'll skip over it because they've already agreed this is commercial use, okay? But going into the, to the criteria number five of, you know, whether it creates hardship. It doesn't create hardship in my eyes because you're overproducing for what you need. If you want to come, put in, like I said, a solar array that the ordinance allows so that you can run your property, I have no issue with it. I do have an issue when you're trying to commercialize a piece of property next to me, okay? Those are my statements. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
Um, so you told us which property is yours and thank you for that. Is that a home site, uh, do you live there?
Yes, residential.
Oh, great, thank you.
I've lived there for twenty-one years.
Cool. And so, uh, we've got some information on the potential sighting, I realize it's not final and it will go through the planning board from the solar folks, and I think they indicated in passing that they would probably be two hundred plus feet from the edge. Uh, where is your home sighted in your property, sort of center or off to one side closer to them, or?
Um, kinda centered.
Okay.
But the, the, the problem with my property, as well as his property, is the wetlands that he talks about on the sides of his property is also on the side of my property. So both our properties, you know, he's got a level plateau, mine drifts down towards his property. So I have eyesight right across to that field.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause I watch deer in it all the time, alright? We have plenty of wildlife in that area. And like I said, I don't have an issue you wanna put a farm there, don't bother me in the slightest. But I do have an issue if you wanna fill it full of solar panels. Now, also, you know, he dropped that paper off to me yesterday, okay? Notice the handwriting on it where it says, well, it could be a half an acre or one acre.
What references this to?
That's what was dropped off to me, okay? What I will state is this, if this board finds reason to give them the variance, I do at least ask this board that stipulations be put in place, very strict ones. Because here's another question I have, is okay, we got a grant, right? We received money from the state, we have to do what the state says in order to receive that grant. How long is that good for? Because what happens after that grant runs out? Like, what's the timeframe, is that one year, is that five years, is it ten years?
With regard to the stipulations, uh, that is an interesting point. Um, what specific concerns, and I, I think I, I know where the answer is, you know, there's a million stipulations that a ZBA could impose, um, and so there's a bunch that you probably don't care about. You probably don't want us to say limiting five trucks a day on or off, you probably have,
No.
You have some thoughts in mind about eye lines or something?
I don't wanna see it at all, okay? That's what I want, alright, that's why I'm here, okay? I have no problem if you put in solar arrays to run your farm.
So visual impact is ninety-five percent of the topic.
Well, it's, it's not because it's, that's against the law.
But, but in the topic of stipulations, right.
Okay, the ordinances, the laws.
And I follow it all a bit, I'm just trying to drive down on your, you know, you, you're saying, I hope you don't grant the variance.
Well, geez, we'll plant fifty-foot trees in there and you won't see it. No, that isn't it, that isn't it. You come driving down Concord Stage Road, how many times do you travel it a day?
No, twice.
Okay, how many times do you travel it a day? How many times do you, do you, do you?
But, but I'm trying to drive on something, you were saying, ZBA, please don't approve it, but if you do put in stipulations, and I'm asking you, you know, let's imagine we disappoint you.
Once you start to deliberate, I can't come back and say something.
Which is why I'm asking you now.
Right.
So what stipulations, now it would make you happy, 'cause you don't want it all, but what stipulations would somewhat address the points of interest?
Because here's the thing, I would like to see it just for them enabled to run the farm, okay?
I understand all of that.
You don't need a variance for that.
I understand, and so your idea is we do not.
If you were to put a variance in place, I guess the only action I would ask is that it stipulates how many panels goes in, and that, you know, it's always gonna have to, we'll say, remain free for everybody, right? I don't know, you know, because here's the other thing, you look at this paper, did you see what the net payout a pocket was? Take a look at it, it's negative, negative thirty-seven thousand. That was part of my commercial break, okay? So. I did some research in a short amount of time since I got the letter, okay? But I think I've got enough evidence here to say that this board should not approve this variance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any question?
Uh, actually, I just follow, no, it's, it's not for you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other disapproving of butters? Garter butter?
I'm gonna butter, but, um, yeah, I have a lot of property line that lines up with theirs.
Okay, could you speak your name for the?
Paul Varg.
Okay.
I'm at seven forty-seven Concord Stage.
Is that on the other side?
Nope, same side, but I'm behind, and I.
Four three sixteen point two.
And I have thirteen acres, half of it behind their, their place.
Do you know? Where he is, is it up here? Right, okay, great, got it, so L-shaped wraps around?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I didn't get any pieces of paper, so I don't have any facts or anything on the numbers or the ordinances. But what I see from my perspective is, they're putting in a business and then planting some trees. I mean, call it what you want, it's a commercial business, that makes me a butted both sides commercially. Am I gonna be a commercial lot? 'Cause I'm rural agricultural, but I don't think I'd have a hard argument saying, I wanna put a Walmart in there or something, 'cause I moved out here to be out in the country, I wanted to live like this, but it's changing, and I will be a butter to two businesses, and it, you gotta call it a commercial.
What, what's on the other side?
The gym.
Got it, thank you.
I mean, the gym was not so bad, I got no complaints 'cause they're way up front and I'm in the back, but, but I will be a butted both sides by businesses, and that's what it is, is a business, and I don't know if my tax rate will change or whatever else will change, but I moved, kinda, I left Bedford so I could be out in the country. I didn't have the country come out to me, the same way it happened in Bedford. So I have my concerns, uh, I don't see it as an all-bad thing, but call it what it is, there is, they're taking the grant money, making money off it, and putting some trees in the way, and saying it's gonna be, it's gonna be a farm, and it isn't, but that's my opinion.
So I've got a question, um, there's obviously, you know, three ways that a board could decide. One is against the variance, one is support with no conditions, and one is support with conditions. And I was trying to drill, drill down previously about what sort of conditions on a variance would address issues. Now, in, in your case, is there a particular site line, is there something?
I will see it, in, in, again, in the summer, maybe not.
Okay.
Lot of deciduous trees around there, but, uh, in the winter, I'll definitely see all of it. Uh, I'm worried about property values going down, I mean, why the main street, the second biggest street in Ware is right on it, that has my concerns, but again, they're of a right, and, uh, I don't know if, uh, I don't know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to see it, but if they do it, hey, I lose property value, it's been a shown fact that out in the country, I don't get to look out at my pond or my field anymore, I see solar, it's not mine, so. That's the way I feel about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Any other disapproving of butters? Public at large, other boards and committees? Wish to rebut.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, again, for the record, Amy Manzeli from BCM Law for Regeneration Roots, let me just look at my notes here. So just speaking to the packet that you received from Mr. Tebow, the law in there, RSA six seventy-four thirty-two, section C, and the dictionary definitions, those aren't on point for the legal issues that we have here tonight. The definitions in the laws from the town of Ware, and then the definition from the state of New Hampshire in twenty-one thirty-four A agriculture, because the laws in Ware define agriculture by pointing to that state definition, those are the laws that are issue, at issue tonight. So the six seventy-four thirty-two C is as Mr. Tebow described, it's just not on point for the variance that needs to be decided tonight. And then, um, both of the abutters talked about the, um, possibility of solar projects decreasing property values, but New Hampshire case law from the Supreme Court is clear that to put in data like that, you need to have a site-specific study of the project at issue. You can't take data from, um, you know, oh, this solar project here decreased property values, therefore, this solar project here will decrease property values, it doesn't work that way. Um, and the New Hampshire Supreme Court has ruled on that, um, plus, just to state the obvious, that was an unsubstantiated assertion, so there's nothing in the record to show that that other study even did occur. Similarly, there's nothing in the record, there's no facts and there's no law that supports that solar arrays might somehow be physically harmful to people. That's just a speculative concern, um, there's certainly no data that we're aware of that would support that. And I did wanna point out, just changing tax now to the percentages of electricity generated and how that would be allocated, and I should've pointed out, um, all of these allocations are in theory, right? Nobody controls the actual electrons in the, um, ISO New England grid. The solar arrays make energy, they get interconnected into the New England-wide grid, and then we all consume them, they're not literally targeted and given to a person, a, a specific person. So this is all just a theoretical allocation, it's the way the electric market works, but it's just how it is. So, um, it's all on page one of the supporting letter, which I believe is page twelve of the entire packet that we submitted. And it's in the section titled Proposed Use. So it, it talks about first, um, fifteen percent of the generated electricity for its own farm operations, and then it talks about, um, approximately twenty thousand dollars worth of energy or sixty-four percent of the electricity to be distributed for fifteen low-to-moderate-income households free of charge. And that's the local, um, free energy. And then it does plan to sell the remaining twenty-one percent of power to five other households in the community. So that would be in Ware and the greater community, working through the town of Ware to do that. So if you, if my math is correct, the, uh, fifteen, sixty-four, and twenty-one accounts for a hundred percent of the generation.
And just to, um, excuse me.
Go ahead, no, please.
Andrew Warren, um, just to directly answer a couple of the questions, the fifteen percent, as we touched upon originally, wouldn't all be used at the farm, can also be used for any other sites that we use in New Hampshire, so a lot of it would be used in our food pantry in Nashua. So a lot of that fifteen percent would be allocated ultimately to a food pantry. And, uh, there'd be twenty years per the grant, uh, agreement. So per the New Hampshire Department of Energy Grant Agreement, it would be twenty years that we would have to adhere to their requirements, which is close to the, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I was gonna add that the grant term is twenty years, and if the board is inclined to grant the variance tonight, which again, we would urge the board to do, that would be a very acceptable and reasonable condition of approval because it's a commitment they are making anyway, and would be happy to be bound to in this variance.
When you say that would be, the condition is specifically?
Twenty years, that the representations made in the application be, and if you wanna link it to the free, um, energy for Ware residents phrase for twenty years. I understand the concern, you know, that we walk out of here tomorrow and we do this for six months and, you know, look great, and then stop. Or change it up somehow and all of a sudden there's fees, or it's not as we've represented. So if it's comforting to bind us to that by a condition of approval, we would welcome that. Let me just, I welcome questions if you have them as I'm going on here, I'm just trying to cover the questions that arose.
I have one, so the grant will cover the cost of everything?
Yes.
Correct? So, why would you guys be selling twenty-one percent? Where's that money, if people decide to do it, where's that money going for you guys?
So, um, the grant wouldn't cover, uh, the entire amount, covers close to it, it's three hundred and fifty thousand, I believe it's four hundred and twenty-five thousand overall.
To do the whole project?
To do the whole project.
And then you're gonna sell twenty-one percent, hopefully?
Be selling, hopefully, approximately ten thousand per year would allow us for administrative costs, also, uh, enter into the maintenance contract with revision energy, and if there's any additional, um, costs, just.
If you can't sell it, what happens?
I think you can always sell electricity.
I'm just saying, just, some people don't want solar.
I don't know if you know, um, I don't know.
There would need to be sufficient load to comply with the grant agreements, so.
So we have to figure out a way to sell it, yeah.
So, do you have like a figure in mind, like, how much people would have to pay, uh, five, just five random households? Like, they'd have to cut, hopefully, for you, for your sake, they'd pay twenty-one percent?
I think it's probably just net metering where you're selling back in the grid.
Yeah, so net, the process of net metering in New Hampshire is under revision by the Public Utilities Commission right now. They're sitting on a, um, a docket where an order is set to be come, coming out towards the end of this year. Net metering itself is an evolving process, but generally what's happening in the electric, um, consumer world is that consumers now have choice. So you can go with your default utility provider, which would be like your New Hampshire Electric Co-op, Eversource, Liberty, depending on where you live, or you can go shopping on sort of the free market of electricity purchasing. So you could do a community power provider, you could do these guys if you happen to live in their area and wanna participate in their group net metering plan. You can do, uh, direct energy, uh, there's Energy New Hampshire, there's, you know, twenty-some-odd providers now that are jumping in and kinda elbowing their way in, and you can go on the Public Utilities Commission website and look at their rates and say, is this more expensive or less expensive than my default provider? So my understanding is that these guys would be competing with those other energy providers. So if their rate for these consumers purchasing this percentage was competitive, people could choose to buy the power from them. It's not mandatory, it's not obligatory, and if their rate is too high, they're gonna have a hard time selling their energy, and the project is going to be difficult. Do you wanna add to that?
I guess the only thing I would add is, um, in order to, and, um, I guess we're getting into the weeds of this, uh, we were planning on, um, offering the energy for a ten percent discount, just so we didn't have to run into any difficulty selling it. So we just take the market rate, have a ten percent, and then we'd be able to have, um, enough funding to, um, I guess, make the agricultural venture viable. I think one of the crux of this argument is whether or not, um, the development of solar arrays is a fundamental component of agriculture now or not. So, and we feel as though strongly it is, uh, both from an economic viability standpoint and, uh, from a diversification of the services that, um, agriculture falls under now.
Stay right there.
Alright.
Andrew, is, is it a, um, is it safe to say that the twenty-one percent that you're going to sell to five other households within the community will be used to fund, um, you know, the, the trees that you're going to then create origins elsewhere?
Yep, it would, um, it, it would create, um, a baseline of financial stability for the project, yes.
Can you speak about your, yes, but can you speak about your nonprofit status and the restraints with that?
We're a five oh one C three, uh, registered nonprofit, so we ultimately have to operate for the public benefit. So our primary goal is not, um, commercial, I know that word's been thrown around a lot today, but our primary goal is to try to, um, benefit the community, and that was one of the reasons that when we were able to receive this grant, that we reached out to the Ware Welfare Department, 'cause we really wanted it to be, uh, more of a local, uh, project. We had no original conditions that it had to be Ware, the sixty-four percent, just had to be fifteen low-to-moderate-income households in New Hampshire. So we were hoping that that would could be a, um, I guess, a way to strengthen the local, uh, connections.
I just wanted to highlight one thing Andrew had mentioned in terms of selling the power, that, um, there's an administrative burden to administer this program to eligible participants. The Department of Energy has, you know, recurring funding, they offer these grants that can do good in the community and make a positive impact, um, for those communities, but there's annual reporting. annual reporting requirements, there's work that RegenRoots is incurring to provide a community benefit that has no benefit to them. So in selling that power, that helps them offset those costs, and that goes back directly into the community. I just think that was important to highlight.
We are drifting.
I, I'm gonna go back to the questions I heard. We talked about the grant is 20 years. The discrepancy that Mr. Tebow raised between half acre versus one acre, so I just want to be clear, what is what? Both of those numbers are correct. A half acre is the limit of the edge of the panels. So if you made a rectangle of the panels, that would be the edge of them. One acre is an approximation of the maximum of everything once we get through site plan. So as you recall, we'll talk to police, we'll talk to fire, if they want a perimeter road, well then, that's, you know, an added 15 to 20 feet around that rectangle. So now we might be going over a half an acre. So I don't want to undersell the total comprehensive size, and that's the distinction between those two numbers. And I did just want to leave the board with the fact that this, you know, agriculture is allowed at this property, right? I think that's one thing we all agree on. And agriculture includes agritourism, which is how farmer, one of the ways that farmers market their goods. Agritourism can be an extremely intensive use. So if we're thinking about this property, and we're thinking about how to develop this use in an agricultural way that does not alter the character of the neighborhood and satisfies the required variance criteria, this is an optimal way to do that. And again, on behalf of RegenRoots, if there are any more questions before we close the public hearing, we are game for that. We tried to bring all the information you would need tonight, but we respectfully request that you approve this variance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're gonna close the public hearing, 'cause I think we've heard it all. Do I hear a motion to accept prong one of the variance application?
Just to accept, and we're gonna discuss. I move that we accept prong one.
Second. And moved and seconded to accept prong one. Discussion.
One discussion, and this is less for what's already been said than going forward, under gravy seedel, would the variance cause a benefit? And that is irrelevant. And, you know, I know that the applicants are passionate, and we heard a ton about it, but it was one of these things where, you know, I'm nodding along, I believe everything they say, and yet, you know, I think, you know, it wasn't relevant, you know, either we can grant it on the five prongs, or we can't, and even if it, you know, helps a thousand starving orphans, you know, that doesn't make something unacceptable become acceptable. I do not think that it threatens health, I do not think that it threatens safety, I do not think that it threatens the general welfare of the public. Altering the essential character of the neighborhood is something I'm curious about. We've got two abutters who suggest it does, and I understand their point. There's also the question about the reservation-conservation overlay, and I read every word in that section, and that section seems quite relevant, and yet there wasn't much meat there. It sort of suggests what the goals are, but it doesn't say, and therefore setbacks are, or, and therefore special discretion is called, you know, so that's, that didn't provide a lot of help. We do have abutters who say that it harmed the public interest, so I think we at least have to give that weight and discuss it. And, you know, we obviously have the other side saying it doesn't harm the public interest, so there's a contrast, contradiction there, and we have to sort of weigh those claims.
We need to use our best judgment.
Correct.
Anything else?
I didn't hear what you said, Malcolm.
Anything else you want to add to this, as far as the public interest, number one?
Yes, I think that, just give me a moment. I think in the public interest, the classification of how we're discussing this is important, right? So this is an application, as stated, we approved the application as it came, this is, we're looking at section 17.3, right, rural application, and spending considerable amount of time discussing a commercial operation, which is, which was sort of overtly acknowledged, right? And I do not see in the public interest the alignment here with the nature of, of what's here in 17.3, right, in terms of, I think there's a heavy emphasis from a public interest standpoint of the, the nature and scope of what an agricultural, even if there were a business, ought to be, or even a small business. And there's an emphasis here on single and two-family dwellings, garages, home shops such as electricians and plumbers, tradesmen, et cetera, home-based businesses such as occupations, such as lawyer, doctor, realtor.
Pause, are you going to pause?
Oh, 17.3.
Great, thank you.
Okay, rural agricultural. And I just find myself just generally, as it relates to this, this point, is, and maybe that's why I'm gathering my thoughts a little, because I think we moved from being a zoning board to a utility commission, briefly, for a bit. I think there were, some of that has to be put to the side, because I don't think it's within our realm of expertise.
Exactly.
Or our standing. And then my last point here is also, you know, there's a, there's a heavy contingent on this application, on a relationship with the town of Ware, that seems to be presumed in place, that I'm not sure that it is, right, that there's a, you know, that we'd be working together in that capacity. And so I think that, when I think of the public interest, that to, to vote in the affirmative would be to obligate on the conditions that are here, the town, in a way, if I'm understanding it correctly, in a way that we're not in a position to do so.
So I understand the point you're making. My thought is that all of the color about, you know, we want to be good partners, we want to help, you know, et cetera, that was interesting, but was irrelevant to the entire application. You know, theoretically, an applicant could come in here and say, I hate all of you, I spit on your traditions, and yet, on these five prongs, I have the strong argument, and I think that it would be our duty at that point to say, yeah, what you think about us, how long you've lived here, whether you, you know, flew in from, you know, Poland yesterday afternoon and don't speak the language, none of that's relevant. So I think that.
Where it becomes relevant is if it's called on the application.
What we have here is pretty simple, it's a point, does it serve the public interest? And I mentioned it before about the law and judgment, very difficult to define public interest by law. We're here to use our best judgment.
And I stand by my point that the public interest, as it, as it's contained within the, the, sort of the essence of the ordinance of Ware residents being the public, that's the public interest, not necessarily the broader public interest of the overall topic, that there's misalignment there.
Yeah.
Since, since you brought up 17.3, I'm looking at that more carefully, and I'm looking at 17.3.3. And a permitted use in the regis, in the rural agricultural zone is barns, sheds, obviously, or other major, so major, you know, is suggesting sort of scope, you know, they're not talking about a eight-foot-by-eight-foot sugar shack, or other major non-residential farm buildings and accessory structures. So I'm looking at this now, and I'm actually saying, you know, I see a strong argument here that a variance isn't even needed, which is not to say that the applicant should walk away and say, oh, you know, yeah, I'll go back to the planning board with that, thank you, Travis, but suggesting the alignment of this project with permitted uses. You know, I think a grain silo clearly falls in there, you know, a lumber kiln plausibly, so that, yeah.
So Sean, again, to your, your point, I think there is public interest, and there would be collaboration between the town and the applicant. That being said, it would be at the planning board level, right? They have to oversee that site, they have to approve the site plan, and ensure that the applicant has met all the requirements prior to moving forward, and, and saying that, yes, they, they approve that. As the applicant has also said, right, police and fire will have a say in how that is laid out to their liking in the sense of to be able to do their due diligence if there's an issue on that site. So there is, there will be a collaboration, so I do see that public interest is being taken into account with what they're presenting to us. That's my opinion. Anything else? All those in favor?
No.
Yes?
No.
Yes? Any yes? So that's three-two, they count, right? Yes. Passes three-two. Three is the, yep. Do I hear a motion to accept number two?
I moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to accept prong two. Any discussion?
I say it on every other case, so I'll say it here, two, Bacon versus Town of Enfield. While a single such project might not greatly affect whatever with the cumulative impact of many such projects, and I, I think that certainly if we imagined, you know, eight or 10 farms up and down Concord Stage Road putting in solar, that would be noticeable. The question is, would it be detrimental?
Well, I don't know, I think that since we are bound to take one case at a time, and each case is separate, it's irrelevant.
I disagree. I think what Springport said in Bacon versus Town of Enfield, that we do have to think about it.
Is it, is it also worth considering, just as you're seeing that, Travis, is, what defines the classification of the, of the business? It's a commercial business, presume that the, whatever the primary source of income is for that business is the classification of the business. So even though we're talking about it as a, as a farm thinking that there's going to be crops, that the primary source of income here would be the production of electricity, the utility, and I wonder if that's worthy of discussion? In terms of the spirit, spirit of the ordinance, are we really talking about agriculture, or are we talking about a commercial business that produces electricity?
That is a good point, and I think that we don't have the data, and at this point, input is closed, but it's not clear to me that the majority of the income would come from solar. I know that there's also the sapling operations, and so I don't know if it's 80/20, 20/80, or something else.
No, it is primarily from the electricity.
It is, great, okay, we got that.
That'll subsidize the, the trees.
Right.
That will be on the property, the 500 to 1,000, which will then turn into orchards somewhere else, whether it be in Ware, or, you know, some other community, you know. Any business, any farm that is selling their product is looking to make money, whether it be from, you know, the chickens that they have on there, the cows that they have on there, the products, the crops that they grow, they're looking to make money. So in essence, they are a commercial business. If they have a farm stand based on how it's written and defined in our own ordinances, they are a commercial business. It doesn't state what is being sold, other than buying and selling of goods, commodities, or services. Okay, so they're selling a service.
Now, I tend to find the service inoffensive, so I'm leaning in that direction, but just, let's make the hard version of the case, which is, no one's gonna object to selling ears of corn, that's clearly agriculture, maple syrup, even though there's some wood smoke generated, that's still agriculture, handmade crafts. What if, you know, someone is, you know, doing fracking because the sales of the petroleum subsidize, you know, at that point, you're like, hey, that's an entirely different industry.
Correct.
And so, there is a boundary somewhere.
The word industry, you use the word industry, and that's, that's a good way to define it. All farms are commercial, that's easy to figure out.
Right.
But is it an industry? Well, there's agribusiness, of course, but what level do you decide it's an industry as opposed to small business, or whatever, what happened? In this case, my, my, my point, I'll go right to it, is I do think it's within the spirit of the ordinance. Based on, you know, the way it's written, yes, I agree with you. It's hard to imagine, you know, they're a nonprofit, which is what they've stated, you know. So in order to keep that status, they got a grant from, from the state. Unfortunately, there are stipulations with that grant, right? They don't just get the money to do what they want with it. Part of that stipulation is that they must sell 21% of that power to five homes. It's not, they haven't come to us and saying, hey, we're doing this because it's what we want to do, it's, it's what they are mandated to do in order to get that money, to be able to produce trees on that property, 500 to 1,000 a year, in turn, presenting those and planting those in an area where they can be used at no cost to the community at that point. Beyond that, maybe they are, you know, someone does make a profit off it, I don't know, but.
I think there's a broader business model.
Right, so, so it's, it's, it's one of those that, the variance that we're looking to grant is so that they are able to sustain their nonprofit, they're able to supply power to, you know, 64% low to moderate income houses, I think that's a great thing. And then in order to be viable, they need to be able to bring in some money, otherwise the project's for non.
To be clear, there's no objection to, to turning a, to turning a profit for a nonprofit, right?
No, I understand.
But the, the idea is that, we have, just to make final, this point, Malcolm, is, point well taken, it's the, but just, maybe just add what you said there, it was 64% to, let me see, half a dozen households?
It's 15.
15.
15 households.
You know, I think to myself that we have, you know, say it's 10, because we don't know what production's going to be, right? These are, these are, these are, you know, kind of broadly estimated numbers, we're not sure like what the priority is, or who gets what, it's a cloudy year, what's that amount to, there's a lot of very moving, dealing with mother nature, right? But even, so let's say, conservatively, say 10. We have one fifth of that here tonight objecting, as abutters, to this. And I, and the, I think it's a reasonable reach, that if it more broadly questioned to Ware residents, that, that the, that there would be concerns. Because if, if provided, they have the chance to.
How do we move to vote now? All set? Those in favor?
And I'm sorry, just, we are on prong two or three, I got lost.
Two.
Two.
Great.
No.
Wait. Those in favor?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Any yes? Prong two passes three to two.
Do I hear? I motion that we accept prong three.
Seconded. And moved and seconded. Any more discussion on this particular one? I don't see that the benefit to the applicant would outweigh, would be outweighed by, yeah, let me try that again. The benefits to the applicant aren't outweighed, I can't say this, I'm just gonna read it. The benefits to the applicant must not be outweighed by harm to the general public. I don't see that the benefits to the applicants being a great thing, I mean, they're gonna break even at the end of the year, right? So the, the property itself is mainly going to be left as is. And even with the arrays that they're going to put in. And even with the arrays that they're going to put in, there's not going to be any concrete footings in there. So roughly after twenty years, if they so choose, and there is no more grants for them to be able to move forward, that can all be pulled up and the ground will heal itself. So there is no harm to the general public in that area. Um, I have not looked for or read into studies regarding solar arrays and whether or not they cause any type of harm to the general public. I do know that there are studies on windmills that they generally, you know, that they state that they harm wildlife because birds run into them and, and, you know, whatnot. I don't see that happening with a solar array.
Quick clarifying question, I'm not a tax accountant. Do nonprofits have any exemptions as, as it relates to property tax?
Wait, this is closed.
What do you mean it's closed?
Uh, no, it's a question for us.
Oh, no, I just, is anybody?
I, yeah. If you're asking questions, I'll go away.
Well, I was looking at Naomi, as the town administrator. And I thought she might, as a, um, not as a question to the general public, but just as a clarification, that technicality.
Okay, great, great.
Uh, but I, I removed my question. But does anyone here on the panel have a sense for this? Right, because when I think of the, the justice to, the, the point three, granting variance shall do substantial justice. Again, I made that distinction of the community in terms of thinking of the town aware, right? The community being, as stated, right, the, the power, power generation for the organization is intended to flow to, um, Nashua. That the, the crop that is produced is of, uh, I know it's going to be broadly, and we said it's going to be a broader, broader distribution, perhaps statewide or whatever that is. So the, the, the justice to the community is, as I, as, as I interpret this and as I feel about it, is, resides on, you know, electricity for, for ten households proportionally. Uh, and that's why I was asking about at least the, 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 the tax, at least there's a, not, not to, not to, you know, punitively taxed, but just to say that there's an equitable tax. Um, at least that would be in consideration as to what the town specifically gains when we're talking about.
The only, the only organization that would, um, benefit that I am aware of would be a church as far as tax exemptions go. That's the only one that I'm aware of and I'm not fully positive on that either.
My other thought is that I bet this land right now is in current use and would probably remain in current use if it's agricultural. And so probably we're looking at, you know, ten dollars an acre, so it's a rounding error.
Right, but can we have a commercial business on a current use piece of land?
Every farm is considered commercial?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Based on the definition in our own ordinance?
Well, and, yeah, and I think that Travis, that's what Travis hit upon, it's like, you know, the lemonade stand turns to fracking, there's a tipping point somewhere.
But again, that's where your planning board comes into effect, right? Um, they do a, they not only do a, they do a full review. And, you know, they go through a lot of different stipulations to make sure that what goes in is exactly what is presented to them. And, you know, we have to rely on them and our, um, yeah, the zoning ordinance, um, ordinances, the...
So I'm going to, I've got a real quick one, which is, I touched on it earlier, we're going to reiterate. Um, prong three is substantial justice, you know, should they be allowed to do this thing? And I come back to my reading of seventeen point three point three in the Where Zoning Code, which is, in this district, we allow barns, sheds, and other major non-residential farm buildings and accessory structures. So for me, on this prong, that hits the tipping point, that, um, you know, grain silos and, you know, uh, these sorts of things, you know, grain drying towers, uh, would be allowed without question. Um, so I think that there is substantial justice in allowing sort of a, a new, arguably, you know, form of structure that maybe more farms will have in the future.
That does need to be bumped up against seventeen point three point six.
Okay.
Right, just, just, just to round that out.
Yep.
Right, that shall be shown to be such a character not to acquire outside storage, visible surrounding properties, so, so... Or source of nuisance to neighbors by reason of noise, dust, glare, traffic, vibration, and/or other disruptive influences. So I think that that's where that, that, uh, where I give credence to some of the, the, um, the butters feedback.
So, so taking that very seriously, because I, I do think it is a good point, um, and digging in, I think noise and dust aren't relevant, glare, glare is potentially relevant, traffic, vibration, okay.
And/or other disruptive.
So, right, so visuals. That, that point's well taken.
Any else? All those in favor?
No.
Yes?
No.
Yes.
Any yes? Passes three, two, again. Do I hear?
I motion to accept prong four?
Seconded.
Moved to seconded. Prong four, any discussion?
Yes, um, there are effectively two tiers of data that ZBA takes on prong four. Expert witnesses and sort of layman witnesses. And we have had no expert witnesses on either side, we have had layman witnesses on both sides. The applicant, uh, the attorney for the applicant rebutted the butters, um, by saying that their claims about uh, price diminution were referenced but not substantiated. You know, anyone can come in and say, I read a study. Um, and that is correct, but I would say that the applicant's claims are likewise unsubstantiated. So we basically have dueling opinions here. Um, and if there were expert opinions, you know, even one expert opinion on one side is, you know, more or less trumps layman opinions. Um, and you could have a duel at the top level, we've got a duel at the bottom level. Um, you know, I've got, I, I built myself a fifteen kilowatt solar array on my farm and, you know, it doesn't ruin it, but it, it's noticeable in size.
Yeah.
Um, and it is, you know, not quite as beautiful as when there were, uh, just pasture there. So, um, I, I do take the butters' concerns on this seriously. Um, I am not prepared to vote yes on this prong without, um, serious, uh, corrective influence, I forget what the word is, I'm sorry, got up at like five AM. Um, with it possibly, um, but I think everyone should, uh, consider that the butters, um, you know, didn't volunteer to look out at this, uh, have owned their land for a while and, you know, enjoyed the sites. Uh, so that's something that we need to take into consideration and that's what prong four is talking about.
But the, but what was presented by the opposing abutter.
Yep.
Um, that research, the paragraph on it.
Mm-hmm.
We see the, and in parentheses, the effects very clearly in Minnesota, North Carolina, and New Jersey for homes that are within a half mile of the projects.
Mm-hmm.
We don't see reductions in sale prices within a half mile of large-scale projects in California, Connecticut, and Massachusetts. So the, the, ohm, that is contradicting its own self.
I, I, I agree with you. The, the quoted material was not persuasive to me because there was not much context, it was not relevant here in New Hampshire. Uh, so I, I'm sort of throwing out the semi-expert claims on both sides. Um, I believe that the applicant's attorney said something like, it is well established, um, which, you know, uh, I'm not sure that we can accept any more, but...
We'd like to move to continue our application.
Out of order, please sit down.
What, is, is, is a movement out of order?
What?
No, a motion to continue at this point is not out of order and we would like to move to continue our application.
That needs to come from this table. Okay, you're out of order.
With all due respect, Chairman Wright.
If you wish to withdraw your application, that's, that's your, your decision. But as far as a motion to continue, it's, it's, comes from this table.
No, it's the board's decision to grant the motion to continue or not. It's the applicant's decision to make a motion to continue. Thank you.
Closed deliberation.
We're not, we're not looking to influence the deliberations, but procedurally, we would like to continue our application.
We have a list of rules and I would like to...
Let me just have my say on this one. Number one, it's always a problem, surrounding property values. Who's going to, who's going to say what, who's the expert? Um, we're a roomful of laymen and that's just a fact. And it's always been that way when we have to deal with this particular article. So what I look for personally is an egregious issue. If there's something egregious here, I don't see it. Uh, and I'm not qualified to nickel and dime the property values. Any other?
I, uh, I guess I want to deal with the motion specifically of the topic of whether it is in order or not in order. I don't know, I'm skimming over the rules quickly. Um, I think we might want to have a discussion about if it is later found to be in order, you know, do we run into any problems by continuing?
Whereas this is a closed deliberation, anything from outside of this table is out of order. And if it is out of order, it is not to be considered.
Okay.
And it's not going to be, uh, anything that we can held against us because this was a closed deliberation.
So, um, the question aside from that was anything else on prong three substantial justice? And, uh, I would just reiterate.
We're on prong four.
Excuse me. Um, right, surrounding property values. Um, and this is one where I would, um, prefer that if the board votes, that it votes, uh, with conditions such as arbor vida. And on that note, having planted arbor vida myself and to block an eyesore, I saw that they grew about a foot over four years and then when I watered them liberally, they started growing two and a half feet a year. So, um, I might suggest that we put a condition of fast-growing arbor vida with irrigation on a timer, which I know, uh, the project as a whole, you know, has irrigation pumps planned.
Proceed with speaking, I've always had a hard time as to where we, uh, insert these. Um, I'm not sure, uh, my thought is that in granting a variance, we should at least have, uh, a stipulation that variance will only be in effect after a comprehensive site review by the planning board. They have to meet the planning board's criteria. And if they meet all of that criteria, then my feeling is they can go for it.
So Travis, to your point, the, the condition that you're stating, um, would actually be something that the planning board would, would present as a condition for approval of the site plan?
Yes, exactly.
Not the approval of the variance, so...
As I understand it, they're still going to need a public hearing on the planning board level. And, and there will be plenty of input then and there.
So, but does that, does that remedy the, the question, the, the point at hand in terms of evaluating? We're, we're ascertaining will diminish the surrounding property value. And I know that we've had discussion as to the information to do that or not. I'm not clear on where the planning board fits into answering that specific question. I understand how they, they would give guidance on, um, if there was a stipulation.
Yeah, so, so I absolutely agree that the planning board has the power to do all of that. I also suggest that the ZBA certainly does have the power to, uh, put conditions on a variance. And so, um, I guess where I'm going with this is I personally would feel uncomfortable for voting yes on prong four unless this board put a condition on. And I understand that the planning board is going to do its whole thing.
I, that's great. Naomi, who, who motioned, who made the motion?
I wrote Travis and I'm hurt.
Yeah.
Perhaps you moved?
That is correct.
I did?
You did.
So if you'd like to amend your motion?
I would like to amend my motion. I motion that we accept prong four with a condition that applicant plant, um, arbor vida or similar, uh, year-round greenery have sufficient density and, uh, length, uh, to screen the butters and provide, uh, adequate active irrigation during the summer months.
Um, fairly detailed.
Yep.
Would you, would you accept, um?
No.
Did you get that, Naomi?
No, I just go to the mic and follow that.
Yep. And I don't want to shorten much, just there was a variance granted against my interest that was ad hoc and shortcut and abused because it was very minimally specified.
Well, I'll second it.
Would you like to add to that amendment, um, that they, they meet all other planning board criteria?
I'm happy to if we think that's a good idea, but I think you, you say that they have to go before the planning board anyway, right? So...
Yep. Okay.
Uh, uh, they can defend their turf, they're big boys.
Okay, well, well, and?
I seconded it.
Who's in favor of the amendment?
No.
Of, of the amendment, are we voting on, on the amended motion?
On the amended motion, sorry.
As you stated.
Yes, yes.
No.
Yes.
I would have to say no to that particular.
Prong?
Right, no, not prong, the amendment.
Okay.
The amendment, uh, for prong, the motion for prong, uh, four failed. So we're going to go ahead with a vote for prong four as is.
No.
Who's in favor?
No.
No?
No.
Yes?
Any yes? Prong four fails to pass. Four to two.
Three to two. He meant three to two. Oh, he meant three to two.
Three to two, yes, I'm sorry. It's a long night, isn't it? Do I hear motion to accept prong five in its entirety?
So moved and seconded.
Any discussion? Let me start. I have a hard time with hardship. I don't see it. And that's all I'm going to say.
I agree with you, but I'll be more verbose. Um, the spring court has said repeatedly that hardship for this prong must be called by a special, caused by a special condition, uniqueness of the property, and not by the quote, "personal circumstances of the applicant." Uh, the application does specify hardship, but it specifies it in terms of the applicant's personal circumstances, which is, this is what they need to do to get the grant, this is what they need to do for this purpose and that purpose. Um, we have not heard anything about the property, which is because it's got rocky soil, because it's got a northward slope, et cetera. Um, and for this, I reference Bellinger v. Nashua, um, and also Ryan v. City of Manchester. And then finally, um, if all other lots in the zoning district are similarly affected by the zoning ordinance, so that there are no special conditions affecting the lot of the applicant, the applicant is not entitled to the variance relief. I think that's exactly what we've got here. Um, I think that if we went down any agricultural lot in the town, um, the exact same set of facts would be here. Uh, so, um, and that's Hanson v. Manning.
Okay. Anything else?
I would tend to disagree with, uh, part of that from the standpoint of where you have et cetera. Um, and the fact is that it is zoned as being very good farmland. Um, and part of the, what they're going to be doing there is growing trees. Um, so without, without the solar, it would create an unnecessary hardship because then they would not be able to actually produce these trees for the benefit of communities, um, because they would not be able to afford it.
Right.
So that, that to me would be an unnecessary hardship as, as I see it.
I think, I do have a, uh, I'm not, I said I wasn't going to say anything else, but one thing, I do think this was a cart for the horse. And here we are. I can't see the hardship, uh, and any hardship, it kind of goes with the, with the people and not the lot. And the variance goes with the lot. So I just, yeah, I can't see it. Anybody else? All those in favor?
No.
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 Yes.
What's that, pardon?
Yes.
Yes. No. Five, four, one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Four to one.
Five.
Okay. It'll cool down soon, don't worry.
Naomi? We have two sets of minutes. Can they wait? No, no questions, please.
Once the meeting's over, you can grab us in the hallway and ask questions.
I just have a question, there was some discussion about minute, meeting time.
Pardon me?
You and I discussed meeting time, and we moved to seven versus seven thirty.
Oh, right, yeah. I was just going to say, fine with me. Let me just say this, since we don't have to act on the minutes tonight, is there any other business before us? One of it is, somebody wants to go to seven.
Yeah, adjusting our start time.
I have no preference, I'm open-minded.
That's no problem with it.
Pardon? Well then, do I have a motion to change the meeting time to seven?
Seconded?
Third. It's been moved and seconded to change our meeting times to seven PM. Any discussion?
Don't care either way, it's all the last.
All those in favor?
Yes.
I don't care. Abstained.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't want to flip the...
So the motion to change our time meetings to seven passes four to one abstention. Now, is there any other business?
I have none.
Do I hear motion to adjourn?
I'm, so motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Move to adjourn to second, move to second, move to second to adjourn. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Five, adjourn.